Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start. It's a joint meeting of the four select and budget advisory committee. I'm gonna go ahead and turn the floor over to the chairman of the budget committee, Tom. And you have the floor.
Okay. Tom Tranfield, can I give your thank you?
Good evening. So, in doing the budget for the two departments as in past years, the main concern is staffing. We've had numerous conversations throughout the years trying to get our staffing levels up so that our officers aren't working alone at night. We're getting there. The magic number for that is 11. We just keep getting busier and busier. Traffic accidents, traffic circle, Route 4, 125. But since I've taken over in 2014, we've had a 280 percent increase in calls for service. During the fiscal year 2017, 2018, or 2016 and 17, we had 11,182 calls for service. From 2017 to 18, the same a year period later, we're up to 17,293. So, it's a 54 percent increase. Our offices are handling just under 50 calls per service per day. That's quite a workload, especially when you have one officer on during the day sometimes. Some of those days, it's me, the chief cook and bottle washer. When we have people in training or on vacation. A few Mondays ago, it was a payroll Monday. Robin was on vacation. I was the only one on duty. And between 6:30 and 10:00 in the morning, I had three crashes, one of them being a rollover with injury at the intersection 152 and 155. And around trying to do that, I'm trying to get payroll done and give it up to Joanne. So, it can be trying at times. My main concern is for our officers who are working late night by themselves. The severity of our calls increases. We've had an increase in calls involving firearms, knives, assaults, second degree assaults. Our resistance to arrests are up this year. Just the different people that we're dealing with, we have to do a response to resistance for them anytime it's anything other than just a routine arrest. And those are up 55 percent. So, it's just unfortunately a sign of the times. If you look at the national statistics for staffing for law enforcement agencies, for a town our size, our population, it's 11 is the magic number. And that's what we're working towards. Currently, we have eight full-time and one part-time, 32-hour-a-week position. I've had discussions with the board over the past year about turning that 32-hour-a-week position into a full-time position. I currently have a full-time officer who had agreed to come here. He didn't need benefits for a year. He's still on his parents' insurance. So, he agreed to come here, work 39 hours a week, not get benefits until this new budget takes effect, which would time, hoping that the full-time will be added into that. I had fully intended on asking for another full-time on top of that to get us to 10, but I understand there are other things going on in town, other agencies, other departments that need staffing help, town hall issue, things like that. So, I decided to not ask for that other officer, just this one making this part-time a full-time position, which is a small increase on my budget and an increase in Julie's budget for So, what I'll do is I'll just go through the line items that have changed. So, based on the staffing issue, the patrol wages are $135,408. That's an increase of $4,775, which would make that part-time position a full-time position. So, basically, what we did was took the part-time line item, $32,000, that was in that, put it into the full-time wages, added another $4775 to create the full-time position. Senior patrolman, we added a senior patrolman this year, Brian Libby, doing a tremendous job for us. So, that $148,845 reflects the addition of Brian Libby to senior patrolman. Part-time patrol officer you'll see is now zeroed out. We added that into the full-time wages. In working through this budget, keeping staffing and the safety of our officers in mind, in not asking for an additional full-time officer over and above changing to part-time or full-time, what I came up with, what happens now is when an officer takes vacation, if we have two officers on at night and an officer takes vacation, that officer's on by themselves. So, what I've done is I went through the amount of hours that could possibly be taken on vacation throughout the year, came up with $15,000 to cover those. So, what I'm looking to do is add $15,000 to the overtime line item so that when somebody takes vacation, we can backfill the shift. That does two things. It keeps the extra coverage on so nobody's alone all the time, and it actually lets some of our offices make a little extra money. My plan is next year to come back and ask for that full timer that I'm not asking for this year, but take this $15,000 out of that overtime line item, put it towards a full-time position. To add to the line item this year, community outreach. I want us to be more involved. I want to be doing more projects in the community. Unfortunately, it costs money to bring instructors in, things like that. I want to do things like gun safety, home security, cybersecurity, self-defense classes, safe neighborhood programs, things like that. And again, you know, to buy the materials, to get instructors, it does cost money. So, we started a line item of $2,500 to see how that, but it'll get us started. And we can go from there. Telephone landlines, it's an increase of $23,800. This basically brings us up where we show we've been a little behind. All these utilities, everything, they go up as we continue to use them more and more, which is the next one, cell phones. All of our cruisers have mobile data terminals in them. These allow the officers to stay out on the street and do their job out on the street and not have to come back in. They can run license checks, write their reports, write search warrants, anything from the car. They don't have to come back to the PD to do it. It keeps them out on the road, keeps them more visible, and much more efficient. Each one of those laptops has a wireless device, obviously, for the cell connection. And then I added, because the cell service in town is not great, so what would happen is an officer would be driving along, and then all of a sudden his MDT or her MDT would just log out. So, then if they needed a call, to get a call, they'd have to pull up and log back in and get service again. So, I did some research, and I found these wireless modems that they install in the car. It's a trunk mounted antenna. And so, we installed those in each one of the cars. We tested one, had service all over town. So, now all of the cars have those in them. And the officers reported that they don't drop the connection anymore. So, that's a huge help. So, with all those added, that comes to $6,200, which is an increase of $1,420. You know, as we get bigger, you add more vehicles, you add more MDTs, and so on and so forth. Lease agreements and contracts, this is increased by $6,229. So, we've had tasers. We purchased the tasers a number of years ago with money from the drug forfeiture account that we had. Well, then, like anything else, they have to be maintained. And what I found was they can be quite expensive to maintain, batteries, things like that. So, working with the company Taser, they have lease programs where the maintenance is included. Every so often, you get new tasers, batteries, it's all included, all the software. Because they're actually, they have little computers now. It's amazing what they can do. The new tasers that we have now actually allow the officer to utilize it on multiple targets if needed. Whereas before, if you used it on one target, you had to take that cartridge out, put another one in to use it on another target, but this, now this target, you're not connected to anymore. With the new tasers, you can actually deploy to one person, and if he's got a partner, you can deploy, and you can go back and forth if you need to until you affect the arrest. So, entering into that lease agreement is an add to our contract line item. We tested Police One Academy. It's online training. One of the biggest expenses in training is sending your officers up. The travel time, whatever it may be. What this Police One does, they have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of training. So, we issue a training every month, hour and a half, two-hour training that they do online, they get a certificate. Our academy actually accepts this training towards the eight hours that officers are required to do, a minimum eight hours of in-service training every year to maintain the certification. So, this gives us between 12 and 14 hours a year of training. They do it right here, do it during this shift. It's, we try, it's been tremendous. Anything from ethics to racial profiling to firearm safety, anything, you name it, they have training on it. Comprehensive videos. It's a great training program. So, we're gonna stick with that. The Stratford County Special Response Team, the SWAT team. Fortunately, we haven't had to utilize them. There were a couple of times we had them on standby, but we were able to diffuse the situation ourselves. But we do utilize them for training at the school, for active shooter response training. And their wealth of knowledge and a huge asset to have, costs money to run that team. So, the Stratford Chiefs got together, and we all decided that if each department could put in $1,000 a year, they would be able to maintain their equipment and training and ammunition and whatnot. So, that brings that to $22,642. Again, an increase of $6,229 covers all those. Heat, we can't control the heat in the building. Comes out of our line item, but we have very little controls. That's $8,000. New equipment. So, we overspent this the past few years. Basically, it's replacing worn-out equipment. Things need to be replaced. They don't last forever. So, looked back, did an average of what we've been overspending, and came up with $3,000 to increase that to maintain our equipment. Stratford County Dispatch, their services are gonna increase this year. I believe they said 5 percent. They were gonna go up. So, this $73,83 reflects that. They haven't gone up in their dispatch services for a number of years. And their equipment needs to be replaced, needs to be upgraded. So, we had all, the chiefs got together, and we thought that, you know, a 10 percent increase and then 2 percent over the next few years to get them up to where they need to be was good, but they, the county commissioner's like, eh, we'll go with 5, and we'll go from there. So, that reflects that increase. The rest of the budget remains the same. Those are just the changes that affect the overall budget. All the increases together represent a 5 percent increase to the overall budget. Again, I was trying to keep in mind what other needs the other departments have, the town has, but I also need to be concerned about the safety of our officers.
Chief, over the past few years, we've had some turnover issues. How do you feel now? Do you feel like we're pretty stable now with the group we have?
We are. We have been. As we've discussed, there was one officer who was disgruntled over a disciplinary action. So, I know that he is trying to find another place to go. But yes, the majority of our officers, we have conversations routinely. They're happy. We offer good training. You know, the things that, you know, our pay is still a little lagging. There are a lot of departments around us that pay considerably more that are larger. And that seems to be the biggest issue. And it's not even really so much the pay, it's being alone. So, they can go to a bigger department, get a little more money, and always have somebody on shift with them.
I have two men in car issues.
Exactly. And, you know, we've got some dedicated people, and they actually feel guilty, as those letters that I had them present last year to the board. They feel guilty when they take vacation because they know when they do that their patrol partner's gonna be probably on alone. You know, I cover the day shifts primarily by myself. When somebody takes vacation, I'll shift somebody down to keep the evening coverage extra, and cover the day shifts by myself. But I can't do that all the time because that affects me on getting what I need to get done. There are certain meetings that I can't attend, trainings that I'd like to attend too for chiefs, but sometimes I can't because I'm the only one covering the shift. So, it makes it difficult for everybody.
Does the $15,000 in overtime help you then? Is it a body issue? Or is it a...
No, it's a body issue.
Will you have somebody to work those hours?
They will jump right in and take them. I actually sat down with my department at a department meeting and discussed what my plans were for the budget and asked for their input. And I told them what, you know, what I thought the concerns were, that the town, there are other things the town needed this year. And, you know, they're good, dedicated employees, so they said that this worked for them. You know, and hopefully, the outcome will be next year. We'll take that $15,000, put it towards another full-time person, and work towards our goal of 11 people.
So, you're saying at this point, because you work the day shift, so if you go with these 11 officers, you're still gonna have a hole, right? Is what you're telling me?
No, no. If we had 11 officers, then there would be two officers plus myself as the day shift.
All right.
So, if somebody went on vacation, then still be an officer and myself on the day shift.
So, the present proposal, you're still down, is what you're telling me?
Correct. The present proposal would give us nine full-timers. And we'd turn that 32-hour week into a full-time, and we'd have nine full-time officers, including myself.
And then next year, hopefully, get the 10th.
Hopefully, I'll put in for the 10th. I'll take the $15,000 back out of this overtime line item towards the salary of a 10th officer.
But we're still not up to 11, where you think you'd need to...
Correct. 11 on the schedule, we played with the schedule, and 11 covered everything. And what it did was it made it so that if, no matter which year somebody took a vacation on, you could adjust and still have the coverage.
On the heating bill, you said it was $8,000?
Yes.
Is that split with part?
Yes.
Sixteen for both?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just a 50-50.
Julie, do you have benefits increases for this?
Yes.
How much do they, how much does, because the part-timer wasn't getting benefits, right?
Correct. So, and again, remember the conversation from previous years, the medical benefits are based on a family plan. So, the medical benefits would be $23,000, and then the retirement would be... But I have a question while we're looking that up. Does the new equipment line include a cruiser?
It does. But I assume, you know, next year, they anticipate the cruiser's going up probably another thousand.
And then it's $13,000 for the New Hampshire retirement.
So, it's another $26,000 retirement.
Twenty-six and fifty-one.
So, what's the cruiser you'll be replacing?
The Explorer.
It'll be the Explorer, because that thing is, nothing but a cross.
Chief, a couple of things. Your training line item is the same, and you're saying under contract, you're increasing because you're gonna do this Police One thing. If your training requirements are going to be fulfilled by that, or most of them, shouldn't the training line item reflect some kind of decrease? Because I'm thinking you had $7,500 for a while, and as far as what this shows, you're spending about $4,000. So, can you address that? My second question is, Stratford County Dispatch, you kept referencing 5 percent, but it's a 10 percent increase, and also the number for 18, 19 is incorrect. You've got two numbers transposed, I believe. I think. Stratford County Dispatch should be 6712, I believe. But either way, even if it's 61, it's still more than 5 percent. So, could you address those two things for me, please?
Well, then, they may have gone with the 10 percent because that's what they originally had talked about.
Okay.
The last thing we had, I was positive that the sheriff said that they were concerned that 10 percent was too much.
Okay.
But we had originally agreed on a 10 percent. That's what the chiefs brought forward.
Okay.
And on the training, that is, if a good training comes up, like this Alice training, I want to have more than just one or two officers trained in it. The problem with having, we need instructors so that we can do our own in-house training. So, you can't have just one firearms instructor because what you do when you want to do your firearms training, if that instructor is on the midnight shift, it makes it difficult for them to come in all day and do training. So, if you have a couple, it makes it more... So, we've gone the past two years without a firearms instructor. So, I was hesitant about cutting that back. I had thought about it. But I'm hoping next year, 2019, to build some two people, two firearms instructors school. So, that, you know, that's ammunition, their time, and it'll come out of that line item.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Any other questions, please, for anybody? Thank you. Thank you, chief. Have a good night. Good night.
Good night.
All set?
All set together?
I'll just sit here and let you talk. Good evening.
Evening.
Reeve Piper, the library director. Philip Kozowski, the chair of trustees. Right here. So, just a little bit about library and what we've done in the last year. My hope last year, when you got your little summary of what we're hoping to accomplish, we're hoping to increase our circulation by 5 percent. We actually did our book and materials in-house circulation increase by 3.5 percent, but our digital circulation increased by 8 percent, which is kind of averaging together. Come up with 5, which is what I hoped to do. That was kind of fun. We certainly have seen an increase in our usage. Our meeting room usage is up 21 percent. One of the things that not a lot of people knows is that we can actually do a shut-in service. We deliver materials to a couple of shut-ins in town. And in 2017, we did 57 visits, home visits. For this last year, in 2018, we did 79. So, I don't know if that's a plus or a minus. It means that more people are not able to make it in, but it is a wonderful service. And Michelle Stevens pretty much takes that all in her way and does that, gives us what our shut-ins cause is that, what do you want? How many do you want to deliver those? That's really a nice thing. We do have a new children's librarian. Our children's librarian, Scotty Robinson, retired after 13 years as our children's librarian, and we hired then Lady Ina Cullen, who has really grabbed storytime and children's services and youth services by the horns, and she's riding the lone way crazy. So, that is a benefit. We've actually had more youth programs and more attendance. But a 5 percent increase in attendance, about could 15 percent increase in programs that we've done for children. We currently have 26,000 volumes in the library that's up from last year. We have 2,200 patrons. Of those, only 53 are non-residents. So, 2,292 total patrons with 53 non-residents. And we do collect a non-resident fee. We have a lot of campgrounds in town, so they pay a half-year residency, which is $15. And the others, a full-year non-resident fee of $30, which is pretty reasonable. I know at least one of our neighboring libraries charges $75 a year for a library card. The value of our collection, which is kind of interesting, when I pulled this number up, half a million dollars. $530,000 is the value of our collection, according to the cost we put in the system for what that costs us or what it costs to replace that. So, it's a pretty nice asset that the town has. It's age, rough age, and that's based on circulation, publication date. The age of the collection is about 2006. So, it's about 12 years old. But if you think about, an author has written a lot of things over the years, and we keep a lot of the older titles which have older publication dates, and we always continue to get the newer titles which have newer. So, it's an average. But it was interesting statistic that I found out. We added 300... Wrong line. 2018. We added 189 new patron cards. We deleted 150, so we had an increase of about 36. We do every year go through our records, and we know when people have moved out of town and no longer hear that those records, or if they haven't used our library card in a number of years. We do take those out to keep this clean of the database as we keep them. I did mention that our digital circulation has increased dramatically, and that continues to increase from the time that we actually started digital collection, and that's with the state of New Hampshire. Of our 2,200 patrons, 215 actually use the online service. The 10 percent, and so I know how much circulation the digital collection gets, actually reflects about 10 percent of our total collection. So, if I have a circulation of 3,000, I have a digital circulation of about 300. And that's been pretty consistent over the last few years. But it's continuing to grow, which we have to see.
Didn't you say that we is one of the higher uses?
Yeah.
But we're like 20,000 or what was it?
In the amount of circulation, we're in the top 20 by percentage. We, since this is the entire state, there's 234 public libraries in New Hampshire. About 215 of those or so are actually participating in the digital collection. Of that, so those 214 libraries that participate, we represent a half of a percentage, which is pretty high, of our usage and a half percent of collection. So, it's pretty neat, I think. We're doing our bit. Everybody's still reading. So, that's a little bit, little statistics, just to kind of let you know what kinds of things that we do. I'm pretty happy with how things have been running, so. Terms of budget, we don't have a whole lot of things to ask for. We are asking for $1,500 to increase for our municipal recreation. Last year, we had initially asked for a $1,000 increase, but since we're asking for a few other things, we went ahead and level funded that from last year. We still have a need in our electricity bill, which is still $1,000 over what we budget. So, we did have to pay that additional amount. So, that's primarily where the increase request is coming, $1,000 in our electric bill. And then, is that right? Yes. And trying to add $500 to our print purchasing, which is books, magazines, books, magazines. Non-print would be DVDs and books on CD. What's the other item on here? We have, we do have now in our line item, we actually can see the amount we're asking for ancillary PR expenses. That's an increase. It's a recommended 5 percent increase over what we had this year, which is what the town administrator recommended, that we built into that.
What is that actually?
It's the health insurance, the dental insurance, and/or the bio, disability insurance, life insurance, retirement system. Yeah. We haven't seen it in our line.
Public relations.
Yeah, payroll, ancillary payroll.
All right, all right.
There you go. It's the marketing director.
I'm okay with it now.
We have it in the past. It hasn't been shown in our budget. It's always been there, but it's never been shown on this.
I understand that. I remember that from last year. I just was PR, I was doing public relations.
Yeah, me too. Every time I look at it.
Don't feel bad now. It's the same thing about a trustee.
Yeah, I know. Ancillary cables.
All right, all right.
It's the marketing director.
I'm okay with it now.
We haven't in the past, it hasn't been shown in our budget. It's always been there, but it's never been shown on this.
I understand that. I remember that from last year. I just was, PR, I was doing public relations.
Yeah, me too. Every time I look at it.
Don't feel bad about us. Same thing about trustee.
You do do PR, don't you?
Yes, we do.
You do do a lot of it.
A lot of what we do is, is helping people with their technology. Really do. Over the phone, in person, one-on-one, two-on-one. This is what we do.
What, what property is covered under property liability? You have a separate insurance line.
Right. That's the, their, the library share of the property liability.
Oh, okay.
I never touched that number. It just appears there.
I just wonder.
The only, the only number that I deal with on a daily basis is the final line at nine-nine-nine, library trustees line at forty-three, nine-hundred. That's what all of my, I think you got this list of this, the breakdown of our operating expenses. Each year, we do, um, hope that we will bring in as an offset, six thousand dollars. Last couple of years, we've been short of that. But that all, whatever we do bring in, all goes right into the operating budget to help supplement these.
So you're good until the new building gets up?
That's right. We're ready.
Pretty much what it said. I mean, you don't have any space to buy anything.
We continue to add. When I went to get the final number of our actual holdings, I was surprised that it was higher than. The last time I've been looking at it, about twenty-five hundred, twenty-five thousand, rather. And now I see this twenty-six. That probably means it's time to lead again.
No, we're putting books in. I always have to ask people to get, get books for me.
And many of you have been in the library. We do have a couple of staff members that are vertically challenged. So getting those books, so we put in storage upon top of the bookshelf is usually me and the stepstool.
Pretty amazing that you got twenty-six thousand.
It is amazing. It is amazing.
Some really paper bags.
Yeah.
And DVDs take slighter amount of space, but you know, when you figure out shelving, there's formulas, you know.
Sure.
Twelve novels per foot, so roughly thirty-six novels per shelf. And we're utilizing all seven shelves per three-foot unit. So there's a lot of books. The weight of those books alone, you know, as you know, for construction, you have to have a hundred and fifty pounds per square foot.
Did you, maybe you said it already, what's increasing, the use of the DVDs or still the regular print?
Regular print's still our bread and butter. Yeah. DVDs certainly, yeah, everyone. It's usually the children's DVDs that circulate the most because they take out a stack and the same stack over and over again.
Do you, out of curiosity, DVDs don't last forever.
They don't.
So you replace them?
We do get some, we try not to replace them. Usually, if they've been well-loved, especially some of the kids' more popular things, we will replace them because they continue to go out.
They have a pretty long life, as far as how many times it can be.
Scratched. We do have a small machine that can do some repair. It's not the best in the world, you know, it's a thirty-dollar machine. But the really nice machines are twenty-four hundred dollars.
Another question, just it's a little bit off, but anybody who's not returning books, reticent, they hold on to them?
You know, every library has their, their SCOT laws. We do our best to get materials back. Um, maybe once a year, we may have to go to the extreme and ask the police to please go and pick them up. Books, maybe once a year.
That's pretty impressive.
Yeah. People are pretty good about bringing stuff back. You know, we don't charge overdue fines. We have a conscience jar that actually does pretty well. All the studies have shown that libraries that charge fines or don't charge fines, return rates are the same, no matter what. Whether you charge a hefty fine, small fine, doesn't matter what it is. If you charge, you still get books and materials back at the same rate that if you don't charge fines. We don't charge fines. We're certainly doing a lot of positive flow at the library. We have a guilt jar. People love to put bucks in there, doesn't it? But we don't, we don't have a huge, you know, the only time you really make an issue is if it's over a hundred dollars for, of missing materials. We do mail the materials, but like I said, maybe once a year.
How much do we pay the state to belong to the digital?
Digital, fifteen hundred dollars a year.
Now, is that, does that vary with usage or access to anything?
Every year, it tends to go up a little bit, but it's for the libraries that are increasing their circulation that they'll see that fee increase. I think this year is going to be the largest increase annually that Lee is going to see, about a hundred and fifteen dollars more than we did last year. We also have, Overdrive is the name of the company that we subscribe to. In Lee, we also do what they call Overdrive Advantage. So we paid an extra fee to be allowed to purchase our own digital titles that are only available to Lee residents. So when you log into Overdrive and it says login, you may see that this is available. That's where those titles that we have purchased for our residents only. So you can still see them in the whole state database, but, so that's a little added increase. But we do pay per title for those things and judiciously because they're expensive.
And when you said you do, you do a lot of, um, technical support, electronics?
We do. We do.
Really?
Oh, yes. Come on in.
Do we, do we have any devices that we run out?
We do. We have a Nook and we have a, I think I have a couple of Nooks and a Kindle. They don't go out anymore. I mean, they were well-used when they first, when they first came.
Now nobody wants them?
Your smartphone does everything that the Nook and Kindle does. That's most of what we do, is helping people get their smartphones to do what they're supposed to do. Lot of handholding.
When you replaced the children's librarian, did you have any trouble with salary levels?
No. I had several applicants interviewed, I think six. It's part-time. It's no benefits. It's an average hourly rate for what you could expect from the experience we're looking for.
You ladies don't have any salary increases for the staff? So I assume, and you know, you get in trouble when you do that. We usually have a pool and we allocate you guys. Is that working for you?
Yes.
Okay. That was a definitive yes.
That's a pretty strong yes.
Basically, just like whatever the downtown employees, you know, want to.
Okay. I just wanted to check, just to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to come in?
Thank you much.
You're going to do these online, you're going to download? Oh, okay. This is just an additional.
Am I supposed to cast a ballot?
Should have been there on Friday. It's already here.
So anything else for the ABC?
Um, just, sorry, one other thing. So I found out yesterday, from the transfer station manager, that he meant to include in his budget funding for an additional full-time person.
For that person?
Yes. Well, actually, what he's, what he's asking for is to change one of his regular part-time to a full-time. So I worked up a spreadsheet quickly that reached out those costs. I haven't included, I haven't changed the complete budget yet.
Okay. So he comes up on sixteen?
Yes. So he might just need to take them and pass them along. And then I've heard so far from CAP, Cornerstone, BNA, Oyster River Youth, Stratford Homeless Center.
Do you have any more?
Alice's is already in her book.
Oh, okay.
I am having some trouble with that apparently today.
Now I have an extra one.
Oh, I must be right. I'm, I'm missing one. Oh, you're missing one.
Now I'm missing one.
Do you pass for?
I can make more. I probably have enough.
Okay, now we're missing two. Does Alice have this one too?
Yes. Oh, Tom, yeah, Tom already had his, his notebook.
Oh, jeez.
And you like, sorry.
You didn't need them.
You need this though, don't you?
I think I didn't need. Down this way.
Because I still had Alice's notebook and Tom's notebook. So Meals on Wheels, Rotary, Stratford Homeless Center, Oyster River Youth Association, Cornerstone, and CAP have indicated to me that they will be at the October thirtieth meeting.
Good.
Yes, more than we, yes.
In mean place. And the others you haven't heard from, or they said?
Some have said, no, they won't be there. The others I haven't heard from. But we typically, I mean, other than Oyster River Youth Association, we typically don't see anybody. We saw a few last year.
Yeah, we had a few last year.
No, Cornerstone is brand-new. Meals on Wheels was brand-new.
You say Rotary?
And Great Bay Rotary is new.
Fireworks.
Is the Haven coming?
No.
No, the Haven's not coming?
Little bit of fireworks for the Durham, which we all enjoy.
So that's all the updated information I have.
I guess we're sure that we'd be.
Yes. I enjoy it all the time. Fireworks in Lee were great last time.
They were. I agree. I didn't see them. But I heard they were.
Anything else for the ABC?
Motion to adjourn?
Well, the ABC, but that's.
Yes.
Okay. Have you adjourned? Okay. Like to make a motion, make a motion for the court to enter into a non-public session, ORSA ninety-one hyphen A colon three-two B.